Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, March 5th, 2019 Board of Selectmen meeting. 6:30. We're going to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Foxborough Professional Firefighters Association Local 2252. Where an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. And then we'll reconvene in open session. And at that point, I will read the rest of the agenda. Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Sure. Move to enter executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Foxborough Professional Firefighters Association Local 2252, where any open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, to reconvene in open session.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? I will call. Good evening, everybody. We opened the meeting and went into an executive session, so I'll read the agenda. We're a little bit behind schedule, I apologize. 7 o'clock, citizens input. 7:05, public hearing, New England Revolution Home Game. 7:20, reappoint interim finance director, town accountant. 7:30, appointment to Veteran Service Advisory Committee. 7:35, Housing Production Plan. 7:40, fire station funeral home RFP. There was an 8:40 discussion on a policy for the Child Sexual Abuse Committee. We're going to postpone that to the 3:19 meeting. Then 8:45, annual town meeting warrant. 9:05, FY '20 budget. 9:30, selectmen's update. 9:35, town manager update. 9:40, assistant town manager update. And then we have some action items. Dave, you want to lead us on the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody here for citizens input? Seeing none, we'll move to the public hearing. Leah, do you want to read the?
Yes. Sorry, waiting for it to come up. Okay. The Board of Selectmen acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter 140, Section 181, and Section 183A, and Chapter 136, Section 4, Code of the Town of Foxborough, Charter 229, and also stadium rules and regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, March 5th, 2019, beginning at 7:05 PM in the gala meeting room, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Massachusetts, to review the applications submitted by Kraft Soccer LLC for the 2019 New England Revolution Home Games, including potential playoff games as well as international matches and double headers that include the Revolution. All events are proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for these events is on file at the office of the Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Morning, ma'am. Evening, ma'am.
Jessineus with Kraft Sports Management. So, we'll just briefly run through the application. Nothing new this season. You won't expect anything new this season, though, we've already seen in the last three. So, 17 home matches, requesting parking lot time two hours prior to kick, gates one hour prior to kick. You'll see the same exact complement of security procedures in place, the same gate use, clearback policy, mags used at every gate. We will use the lower bowl of the stadium, not the south end zone, though, so our standard baseline setup is the east and west sides, and then the south end, which we use for GA, and that's our sort of European soccer contingent, so they use, they sit in a GA configuration, bring props, bring a different atmosphere to the matches. The biggest change that we'll see this year is that the MLS has made an executive decision to shorten the length of the season. So, when we typically have been lucky enough to make the playoffs, we've run into late October and even into November. MLS wants the entire season wrapped by Thanksgiving. So, we actually, we'll see a much more condensed schedule. We'll lose some of those late fall and early fall games, which is unfortunate, because those are usually somewhere best attended. You'll see two extra ones now on Wednesdays, which we do have Wednesday evening matches, which aren't as well-attended, so it was a disappointing move by the league on our part, but to condense the schedule in general, it was a league-wide decision that was made. With respect to ticket pricing, it's remaining exactly the same. We don't have any international matches lined up yet, but we will continue to work on that. And then just last week, we announced a match revs with Chelsea, and so a quasi-international match, obviously, and they'll be playing on May 15th, and it's actually a charity event. So, it'll be exciting to raise awareness around antisemitism, the fight against it, and hate crimes in the country, and sort of increasing the overall attendance and participation when it comes to respect in sports. So, we're excited to make that announcement and look forward to hosting that match on the 15th. That's the only piece that wasn't, because that was just announced last week, that wasn't included in the original application.
Question on that, when you do an event like that, you expand the ticket sales, so it'll be more than the standard 18,000 or 20,000?
Sure. Yeah, so with international matches, the hope is always that they sell well, and so we hope that we expand up into the West Club, the 200 level mezzanine, and the 300 level. So, as we sell, we keep in close contact with the town manager, with the chief of police and the fire chief, so that they know and they can adjust their staffing accordingly.
George, you guys are all good with everything I take it?
Yeah, we reviewed it in the whole meeting, and we unanimously, unanimously recommend for your approval.
Anybody on the board have any questions? Comments? This is a public hearing. Anybody in the public have anything? Make a motion to close the public hearing?
All right, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion on closing the public hearing? Seeing none, all those in favor?
All right, move to approve Kraft Soccer LLC application for the 2019 New England Revolution Home Games, including potential home playoff games, as well as international matches and double headers that may include the Revolution.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jess.
I'm going to go a little bit out of order here. Can we do the appointment to the Veteran Service Advisory Committee? Ally, you want to come up, too?
Thank you. Hi.
Just introduce yourself, everybody.
Ally, Director of Veterans Services, Town of Foxborough.
Michael Kerr.
So, we're doing a short-term appointment here, it looks like?
Yes.
Filling a vacancy, I would assume?
Correct.
You want to tell us a little bit about yourself, Mike?
I live in the town. I'm a firefighter in Quincy. I grew up here. I'm a veteran of the Marine Corps, and I'm just, I have some ideas and want to help out with veterans in the town.
Thank you for all of your service.
Thank you.
Anybody here have any questions?
Looking forward to it.
Excited to join, Mike.
Yeah, thank you.
We have a motion.
All right, move to appoint Michael Kerr to the Veteran Services Advisory Committee as a member for a term expiring May 1st, 2019.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thanks, Mike.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right. 7:20, reappoint interim finance director, town accountant. So, the last time we were here, Jim wanted the cost breakout of what it was costing additionally. So, we have that. Bill, do you have anything further?
No, it's, it's an indication as to working on the cost of the vacancy on a basis. Hopefully, we can come to some resolution of it soon, so we can stop that additional cost.
Anybody else have any questions on the reappointment of the interim finance director?
I guess I would just say that, you know, we're here doing this every 30 days, two weeks. When we first started talking about this, I think we talked about 12 weeks being, you know, potentially the max that we would see at this, and if I counted back correctly, we're, we're week 12 or 13, we're there right now. So, you know, initially, we thought, okay, that's the longest time that this would be happening. But now we're here, and I'm not sure how much longer, how long are you looking, are you recommending?
Well, we, you've been recommending 30 days at a time, in terms of your approval, so I don't have the ability to tell you right now that we're, we're going to finalize it, but we are working towards a resolution, and I can't get into the details of it beyond that, so, but I will tell you that, but we are working towards a resolution.
So, I guess that this, you know, just sitting at this table, you know, it's hard. We have no information. We have to approve. We don't know what the end date is. It seems like we're just, you know, kind of rubber stamping for 30 days. So, it puts us in a tough, I feel like I'm in a tough position that, you know, it sounds like I don't have any, we really have no other option, and we don't know how long it's going to last, but we're doing this for another 30 days.
I wish I could have a better answer for you, but I don't.
Okay.
And in the meantime, we have to keep the finance department running, so.
How about FMLA, 12 weeks, job protection, I mean?
Can't get into that discussion with you.
So, this could go on indefinitely?
No, actually, this, this person is on a paid leave program, so, and it's not indefinite. I think it had been listed as that, but that's actually not true.
Okay.
Does it make sense to do it 30 days? I mean, we're here every other week. Should we go two weeks? Should we go 30 days? I mean, what's?
I would think 30 days would be more appropriate, and then once we have resolution.
We'll certainly come to you with that.
Yeah, and we're not going to make, go longer than it has to. We're trying to, you know, resolve this.
We're just as anxious to get it resolved as you are.
I mean, I wouldn't mind keeping it on the agenda ever, until we have resolution. I mean, this is costing additional money, so I am okay with revisiting it every two weeks rather than every 30 days, but I'm hoping.
I mean, we're not going anywhere. Yeah. You know, unfortunately, if I could tell you something, I would, but I can't.
But we are here voting on this.
I understand. I understand, but, yeah, you still have to keep the operation running. That's my, that's my key.
So, does the board want to keep this on the agenda every other week?
I mean, it's six of one, half dozen, it really doesn't matter. We're going to, whether we do it every two weeks or 30 days, if we do it 30 days, we could always come back earlier and say, what, this is, what's happening?
I'd prefer it every two weeks. For the fact is, there's no way to communicate. We don't get any information in, because of the process. It is our hire. If something happens, I just appreciate an update and some dialogue on it.
Let's put it on for every two weeks, then?
Okay, so let me just check my calendar for the next meeting date. What's that, March 19th?
It'll be March 19th.
Is that what we're, what we're making the move?
Yeah.
The motion for? Okay. So, re, move to reappoint Christine Dupras as interim finance director slash town accountant until March 19th, 2019.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. All right. 7:35, Housing Production Plan Grant, Paige Duncan.
Hi. Paige Duncan, planning director. So, I'm before you tonight, asking what I hope is a simple question, and that is to accept the grant. We were awarded, let's see what the amount was, we were awarded a $35,000, $30 grant from the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs, and then a $5,013 grant from MAPC. And the town will be matching that with a $10,000 contribution out of planning funds. So, the total project is $50,000, and the town's paying less than 20%. And what this is, is this is a housing production plan. It's a required document. In the past, it was usually done to avoid 40B. You know, you'd do a housing production plan, show how you were going to get units approved that are affordable, and that would buy you some grandfathering and sort of keep you from having to do it. As you know, the town is now over 10%. So, as a planner, this makes me excited, because we could do a real housing production plan. And what that means is, I want to take a hard look. You might have already heard my little shtick about conversation on housing, but that's kind of what it is. I mean, I read the Facebook pages, I read, you know, I hear from residents, I go to the senior center, and I hear all the concerns about housing in town. There's too much of it, but yet, that, you know, it, folks can't downsize here, they can't live here, you know, they want to move out of their big house and move into something a little smaller, more modest, but they're, the stock isn't there. So, this is something I'm looking to actually be a very interactive project, where we really want the residents, I'm hoping that everybody's listening, that we really want the residents to get involved, because this is going to be your plan. And this can, now that we're not constrained by 40B and threats of other housing that's supposedly affordable and really isn't, we can actually look at the needs of the citizens. And so, that's what this project is going to be. So, we have MAPC, our regional planning agency, is going to be the consultant on the project. It kicks off this month, and it'll be about a year long, and we're hoping that the Board of Selectmen will get involved, will be looking to seat a committee, which I know is torture, but it's really important that we get some, some active folks involved that really have an interest in this, because I think we could do something great. And sort of, I don't want to get into it too much now, but you might have heard that we're doing a leadership and innovation project, Bill, Mike Donz, and Nick Riccio, and me, and we're doing this through the Public Sector Consortium. And our innovation project is going to tie nicely into this, which really is try to, how to meet the needs of Foxborough residents for housing, you know, from the whole, from beginning to end, continuum. So, we are excited about this project, and, but the first thing first, I was going to ask that you would accept the grant that has been given to us from the state and MAPC.
Anybody on the board have any questions on any of this?
General question. So, I know where you're from, I know where you've worked in the past, and now you're experienced Foxborough. The stuff that you talk about, you know, people having a hard time downsizing, and they have a house and they can't afford to move, how, how is that Foxborough versus surrounding towns? Is it much different if I would move to Plainville, or Walpole, or Norfolk? Just your, because I don't think we're that different than the surrounding towns.
No, you're not. In fact, it's a nationwide problem and a region-wide problem. I mean, the land, one of the things we might find is that land costs are just so great. What I can say that I find unique about Foxborough is the attachment to the community. Like, when we go to the senior center, they don't want to move out. You know, they really want to stay in town, and I don't, I, in my other communities, I haven't felt this strong sense of community, so I really feels, you know, I feel like I'm letting people down when I can't really offer, you know, I can't, we can't provide what you need, and I know that they really want to stay here. So, that's really, you know, my goal is to see if there's a way. I don't have the answer yet, you know, and it might be, there isn't, maybe we're all in trouble, because our housing costs are, the land costs are so high, but there's got to be something. So, we want to at least explore it, see if there's anything out there to kind of make it work for the residents here.
So, and I appreciate that, but when, when you say for the residents here, so you make an investment into affordable housing, and then it's out there?
I'm not necessarily talking affordable.
Housing options, right, rather than the big box and moving down. What's, so you make this effort, we invest in it, and then somebody from Walpole or Norfolk moves in, because it's a, it's?
You probably already have them trying to move in now.
But, but, but is there stipulate, I mean, some developments you do, it has to be resident-based or some type of qualification? Anything like that for Foxborough residents, or is it just a free-for-all?
Well, we're not to that point. We don't have any solutions. I mean, they, like, under 40B, they do have local option. It's, it's a little bit difficult, but we have been able to do it in all our projects to get that. We're not there yet. I don't know what we're going to come up with, and what programs, and how that will work. So, I guess I can't guarantee it's for Foxborough, but I certainly know that what we're trying to do is meet the needs of these residents. And you might get some people from out, and it depends on what we're looking at, and, you know, I don't yet know what that is.
And the question, the fundamental question we ask ourselves, because we don't even know if there is a problem. We think, we think there's a problem, because a lot of people say to us that, you know, that they have concerns about staying here, or what the generation, next generation or the elder generation is going to have for options. And it's really an interesting question, because we want to do the best we can to try and provide options for people, but the other side of that is that, that means that we're going to have to change the way we look at housing in order to do that. We don't have the answer to that. We really don't, but that's why we want, we want a lot of folks to participate in this process and try to help us with that, so we can come up with options that make sense for this community. But I will tell you, Paige is right, it's a nationwide problem. It's not just limited to Foxborough. Paige, you're going to look at the zoning as part of the housing production plan?
Yeah, that's the latter part.
Because, you know, with land costs, density is key to make affordable work.
Right, and it's a big balance. I mean, we're going to hear it tonight. I mean, you know, folks don't want more cars on the road, they don't want any more development near them, and yet, you know, yet they also, you know, know, I know, you know, Chris, you've said you'd like to someday maybe downsize, and you want to stay in town, but you don't want to go live in, I'm, now I'm speaking for you, but I'm assuming you don't want to live in an apartment, like, where you don't have good storage, you might not have a garage, you know, you get, you get comfortable with certain things, and it's like, that option isn't provided, whether you can or not. So, it might not only be affordable, it's just providing choices. You know, some folks don't have to worry about affordable, others do, and it's just sort of like, what are the needs of this community? And that's the one thing I'll say about Foxborough is very unique, is people love Foxborough, and they want to stay here, and that's a very strong sense you get here. So, it's, just trying to find a way. I mean, the domain and the lodge, those added 500 affordable units to town. You know, I don't really think those are affordable. So, that's on the books, we're affordable, but let's try to really find a way to meet the needs of our residents, you know, that are here today.
Ready for motion?
Yeah.
All right, move to accept Housing Production Plan Grant.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Paige. We are a little bit early. We want to start the, do we have everybody here for the firefighter, the fire station, or do we want to clean up some action items? Yeah?
Which one do you want to do?
Let's get right into it.
Yeah, yeah, let's go with the firefighter. So, Paige, you're back up here, I guess. Maybe Lorraine? Yeah.
Firehouse.
Firehouse, Paul.
So, I'm going to go back and sit in the audience, since I have recused myself since the start of this process, so. Hi there. Hi. Good evening. Lorraine Brew, 126 Mechanic Street. I'm here with Paige to, we're very excited to be here tonight to talk about the proposals for development of the fire station and the funeral home property. So, I just want to start off by thanking the members of the Economic Development Committee for all of their efforts that have gone into this process. Mark Rebbin, Sr., Dan Krantz, Mike Sag, Mike Stanton, Kurt Yakin, Tom Murphy, Steve Coote, and John Eva. And then we have ex-officio members who've also provided a lot of guidance for us, Stave Feldman from the board, Kevin Weinfeld, Planning Board, Barney Overett, Zoning Board of Appeals, Bill Keegan, and Paige Duncan. So, just to give a little background to the viewers, the town actually opened, they received proposals on February 15th, and at that time, members of the Economic Development Committee and Paige evaluated, working with the town manager, evaluated those proposals. We received four. Three were determined to be complete, so one was disqualified. So, in order of the property bid, I'm going to read the developers whose proposals are complete. Douglas A. King Builders Incorporated of Northeastern with a bid of $405,000. MPC Development LLC of Milton, Tragorth Companies LLC of Boston, $400,000. Gibson Corner Realty Trust of Foxborough, $250,000. So, once it was determined that those were the three proposals in the running, the proposals were submitted to all of the members of the committee, and we each did our evaluations individually, and our evaluations of criteria were based on the vision that was accompanying the proposals. And I'll just read this again for the public. The vision for our review. "The Board of Selectmen through its Economic Development Committee, the EDC, has determined that a mixed-use development consisting of a restaurant on the ground-floor level facing the town common, complemented by housing and parking uses for the remainder of the project site, is the highest and best use for the project site. Housing will provide needed residential units in downtown Foxborough, and a restaurant will complement the newly energized and thriving Marilyn Rodman Performing Arts Center, formerly the Orpheum Theater, which is located across Rock Hill Street from the project site. This mixed-use project will be an implementation of the recommendation of the town of Foxborough's Downtown Strategy Plan, which specifically addressed the redevelopment of the former fire station funeral home site as an opportunity to serve as a catalyst for the downtown revitalization efforts. The Downtown Strategy also articulated a vision for downtown by providing guidance for future development." With that in mind, we ranked the proposals using criteria for five different categories. The rankings that we provided were highly advantageous, advantageous or unacceptable. So, what we did in alphabetical order at our meeting was go through each of these criteria and provided ranking based on the proposal. So, the criteria are consistency with project vision as described, which includes a conceptual plan and description. The consistency with the downtown vision and strategy as described in the RFP. The qualifications of the project team, project feasibility, including the ability to obtain financing, and project timing. So, the ratings, again, we went around with each proposal. Ratings were translated into scores and tallied. So, the final tallies were, the committee ranked the highest score to the King proposal with 117 points, followed by the Gibson proposal with 99 points, and the MPC proposal with 90 points. At our meeting, when we wrapped up, we had some discussion, there were just a few questions, but at that time, we had spoken with the developers and invited, they were invited to attend the meeting tonight to present you with a 10 to 15-minute summary of their proposal for your consideration. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you, Chris, to bring the developers forward. Does that sound all right?
Yep, just a point of clarification on this breakdown, you have the points wrong. You have MPC with 99 and Gibson with 90, but it's correct on the, the master tally sheet. So, also, reading through the letter from the EDC, it talks about Bill you reviewing and recommending and bringing forward, so do you have anything to add before we get into any of this?
Well, just like to add that, actually, there are three, three very good proposals to present to you. There are a few issues with each of them that you can, that are important to consider, but I think, well, I'd rather have you go through the proposals themselves first, and then we can comment, I'll comment after the presentations are made. I think they'll become, the comments, the concerns, our questions, issues that we have will become as self-evident as you, as you go through the proposals themselves. Mr. Chairman, there is no set order to, to how these presentations were, ought to be made tonight. The only, one concern had been registered to me about whether or not, I think, the King proposal, they were trying to wait to the end, because of, they're waiting for one of their members to be here tonight, so, but see, other than that, I've had no other comments made to me about the particular order in which you can present tonight.
Okay. And then I just want to throw something out there. We got all of this material Friday, little after noon, three very, very comprehensive proposals, a lot of reading, I'm sure by my fellow board members and myself over the weekend, so typically, we do not vote on something the first time we see it, so we probably will not decide unless, you know, the board really moves to, to do something at the end of tonight. So, I just want to throw that out there now. Definitely, it's a big decision for the town, a lot of material to digest. So, do we have, how do we go about figuring out who wants to go first?
I, I think it's your choice, Mr. Chairman, if you want to. I think it's your choice, Mr. Chairman, if you want to, if you want to go with either MPC or the Gibson proposal.
So let's start with MPC.
Thank you.
If you could just, you know, address us and let us know who you are and name and everything for the record.
Sitting.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Thanks for having us this evening.
You're welcome.
So I'm Matt.
Can we just maybe dim the lights a little bit, too?
It'll brighten up.
It's coming up.
Very impressed that your technology worked that quick.
I am, too.
Record.
Yeah, that's good.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having us this evening. My name's Matt Zoller. I'm principal of MPC Development. And this is my business partner, Dave Tragorth of the Tragorth Companies. We have a brief presentation to give you a sense of who we are, and then we'll talk you through our proposal, and then answer any questions that you might have. Just before we start, though, we are really excited about this opportunity. It's a great opportunity for the town. It's a marquee location, and, you know, you should be really excited about all three proposals that you received. So, thank you.
So I'm just gonna, as Matt said, just take you through some of our experience, some of our retail experience and thoughts as well. And then I'll hand it back to Matt to talk about the conceptual plan and the proposal highlights. And we'll move through this pretty quickly because a lot of the material is in our proposal. And appreciate the time you guys are taking tonight and to review those. So we really focus on urban infill projects and ones that are not only mixed use, but also mixed income. To address some of the challenges that our region has in terms of housing and affordability that you were talking about earlier tonight, and have a wealth of experience in Boston and other surrounding towns to bring to this effort. And one of the reasons why we were excited to see how the proposal was written in a way that we think, regardless of how you choose tonight, will make this a successful project. Just a little bit more about what we've done and what we will bring to the table. This is a project in Haverhill, Massachusetts. This shoe factory was vacant for at least seven years on the top floors and a surplus office supply store on the ground floor. And right along Main Street had no parking. And we're able to use, this was an all-market rate project, loft-style historic building. On the ground floor, we have Battlegrounds Coffee, veteran-owned, Haverhill, that just expanded to their second location, a dog biscuit baking company from Newburyport, and an art gallery on the ground floor. Again, pedestrian-friendly retail with 19 market rate units above. This is downtown Boston next to the Longwood Medical Area condominiums, as well as affordable rental mixed in. We bring a level of project knowledge and financing sophistication that can build projects such as this. And certainly, in this market, we're able to do this as market rate condos, affordable condos, and affordable rental, and have a real success right next to the LMA. This project is in Chelsea, another urban infill project close to their main street. This one was all residential, 96 units between two buildings where we actually had to build around a historic kind of office building. And again, we, this one had 50% affordable, 50% market, was leased up within two months of opening over in Chelsea. Two buildings down in Haverhill, this one is under construction right now, 24 units, market rate over another retail. We're talking to a shoe boutique seller on the ground floor, and we're excited about that, as well as some other potential uses. For those of you who may know, Haverhill, it's a bit of a distance from Foxborough, but they have a great restaurant district there. And we've been really pleased to be part of that renaissance of their, of their main street. This project is in the process of closing now in Redding, Massachusetts, 55 units with ground floor retail, about 200 feet from the commuter rail. This was permitted under 40R, so it's 25% affordable, with the remainder being market rate. And we're excited to talk to a couple of different folks. There's a natural food store that's interested in this space, and a couple others that are as well. So in terms of retail development, I think this translated into our proposal. How do we try and get these smaller locally-owned businesses to be successful on main streets such as the one that you have here? And we've luckily been able to be successful with it. And a lot of it does depend on the building, and what the constraints are, and the landlord as well. So I think we urge, we try and be as helpful landlord to our retail tenants as possible, because we really see it as a partnership. And what we've been able to do, we've also, we have Estrigan down in the South End, who's one of our tenants as well. Restaurants as well, a key component to these successful downtowns. So here are some of the things that we've done. And you may be asking, well, why, why did we make our square footage what we made it? Because one of the real struggles that some downtown retail businesses have, especially new ones that are opening up, is the capital cost going in to open up, and then the rent going forward to keep going and keep moving. In addition to that, they need a critical density around them so that people can walk out of their homes and go grab a bite to eat, grab a coffee, and have that walkable experience in a nice place such as the site that we're talking about. So here's some of the successes we've had as well in the past five years. We're excited as well. Jamaica Me Hungry is a successful food truck in downtown Boston, and we're going to have their first retail location opening up this spring in Jamaica Plain at one of our retail destinations. So we've really tried to take all these lessons learned and apply that here, not only on the residential side, but also on the retail side, knowing that that is of importance to you all and should be of importance. So, as I said, just, these are some of the elements of why what we see as main street retail success. And applaud you all for really making an effort to get there. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Matt for some of the conceptual plan.
Thanks, Dave. I also want to present to the board a letter that we recently received from a well-known restaurateur that's interested in the location. We just didn't have this information at the time we submitted the proposal, so I want to put that in on record. This is Brian O'Donnell. He has 10 concepts in the Boston area. And this is a letter of interest where he's interested in this space at the square footage that we're proposing. So I'd like to submit that to you for your review. I'm glad to hear that you're not going to make a decision this evening. This is a very complicated project, and you need to take the proper time necessary to digest all of this. So hopefully, this is helpful in kind of getting you to that point. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to walk you through the proposal that we made, and then some of the highlights of that proposal, and then we'll leave some time for questions. So here is a rough sketch of the site. Our architect, icon architecture is a well-known residential mixed-use architect from the Boston, from Boston. He's done projects all over Massachusetts and throughout New England. So here, we propose what is 22 units. So a series of townhouses over flats on Market and Rock Hill Street. And those are contextually appropriate to the neighborhood. The architecture is that of what is residential and speaks to the homes that already exist in and around the neighborhood. And then we're proposing a new building here on School Street, which is retail on the first floor with residential above in a more modern structure. And the architecture, you know, is subject to change based on the process that we would go through to get this permitted with the town. The one point I want to make about the neighborhood feel is that we purposely put a number of two-bedroom flats and one-bedroom units on the ground floor. So those could be accessible to those that might be downsizing from a larger home within Foxborough, and they want to stay in the community and still have access to all of the amenities located here in the downtown. So that's kind of a snapshot of our proposal. Again, 22 units with about 2,000 square feet of retail on School Street. And then I just want to bring to bear some of the, some of the high points, we think. So we did hear that, you know, you were interested in exploring keeping the existing fire station. We feel that the building we proposed along School Street is more functional and accommodating to the retail use, as Dave described. Retail, neighborhood retail is hard enough, so we wanted to start with a clean slate, something that, you know, a retailer could come in and occupy readily. And we're also proposing the new construction of the townhomes with the parking behind. And I should have said at the last slide, we are proposing one-to-one parking for the residential. So every unit will have one space of parking accommodated for on-site. So next is kind of speaking to the new construction, but also, we reviewed your community vision plan. We reviewed your zoning that you already have in place, and we wanted to utilize those tools. So what we've presented, we feel is buildable right out of the gate. And it does meet those needs. It's more residential in the downtown, and it has a mixed-use component to it. And it is at a height and scale that is in context with what's around it. Our proposal was a bit unique, so I want to make this clear. So we are proposing that 40% of the units will be deed-restricted at 80% of the area median income, and that's about $55,000 a year for one person. We did that because we feel like, as Dave said, there is a need for more affordable housing in the Commonwealth. That is for seniors that might be on a fixed income. That is something that you talked about in your plan that you want to see is housing for seniors. Shouldn't be on the outskirts of the city in a remote location. It should be downtown where there's some vibrancy and activity. And also, it's families, you know, that want to live in and around the downtown. There are a lot of amenities around the site. There's a playground across the street next to the church. You know, there's opportunities there to kind of welcome all types of people, young people starting a family. So those two-bedroom townhouses, two-bedroom flats, those are available to folks there. And also, a 70% preference, if allowed by the state agency, we have some state resources contemplated in our proposal. A 70% preference for Bridgewater residents, that would be town employees, you know, as seniors, folks that are already living and working in and around the downtown, they would have a preference to live here. And then we made a request to help us invest in this project, where we're asking for $900,000 to support this affordable housing that we're proposing. It's not cheap to build, it's necessary. And so that was a request that we made in our proposal. And we think it's necessary. It's also leveraging an additional state resource called the Community Scale Housing Initiative, which is something that the Department of Housing and Community Development is offering up for developments of about 20 units. So your dollars are buying more dollars to make this a better project. And those dollars will also help us to kind of work with those commercial tenants to lower the rents in that commercial space. So you get a high-quality retailer that's going to stay for the long term and can enter into a long-term lease and, you know, just make themselves part of the community. So it's really in an effort to help support the development for the long term. I spoke about the letter that you have before you, Commonwealth Hospitality. Happy to answer more questions about that. And then I just wanted to talk about the public-private partnership that we're proposing. This is truly an opportunity for us to work with you for the long term and start a conversation about what this redevelopment should be. We want to move quickly. We want to start construction, but we want to make sure we get it right. And I think Dave kind of spoke to our track record. We both have extensive experience in this mixed-income, mixed-use type of project. And we want to bring that to bear here in Foxborough. So with that, that's our presentation. Again, thank you for having us. We're happy to be here.
Anybody on the board have any questions on?
Yeah, the $900,000 you just mentioned, is that a grant from the state?
So the Community Scale Housing Initiative has resources contemplated in our budget. That's $1 million. The $900,000 we've requested from the town would be from your affordable housing resources or another bucket. You could do tax increment financing for this type of project. So it's leveraging resources. It's a request. So we're asking you if that's something that could be entertained by the town.
If we didn't entertain it, what happens?
I think basically, we would have to scale back the affordability. So this is, it's modeled on successful other projects that we've done in other towns similar to Foxborough in terms of in line with the requests. But again, if that's something that the town is not up for, we could certainly have that conversation in terms of how to proceed in a different way, toggling up or down that affordable component.
I have two questions. One, on your conceptual plan, it looks like you have units sitting on top of town-owned property that's not part of the sale, where you have the three one bedrooms and the stairwell.
Right here.
Right there. Yeah, I think you're encroaching on town land that's been set aside. It's not part of the development. So you need to take a look at that. In addition, did you guys look at workforce housing grants from Governor Baker's initiative? They'll basically grant you $100,000 a unit.
So that's what we're contemplating with the Community Scale Housing Initiative. There's also a mass housing program that does something similar. You know, we would go down that avenue as well. But the Community Scale Housing Round is about to open up. And, you know, if there's, this worked for, this is a great project for that program. So that's why we proposed it, but there are other resources as well.
The problem with that is, I'm not speaking for the board, but from my perspective, I don't know if the town has an appetite for that, number one. And number two, it's going to warrant, it's going to require a warrant article and town meeting to move the funds around or take the funds. So I think there's a, there's a time issue there.
Sure.
Something to consider.
One of the other questions I had on that point, I know it's not considered 40B, but using state dollars, state agencies that you mentioned, does it kind of negate some of the permitting and by right stuff that a 40B kind of does? Paige is shaking her head no.
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Just a question, gentlemen. Thanks for your presentation, by the way.
Thank you.
One of the things that you cite in your proposal that is that your greatest concern is described in section five as to what degree the site has been impacted by environmental conditions. I know that the other, other proposals don't address that in a way that you do, because you indicate that it's sort of a question mark in your mind. It looks as, I think, I believe that the other proposals actually did a much more in-depth evaluation of that than you did. And now you're asking us, in a way, in your proposal, that if it gets beyond a certain level that you want us to recon, you know, to be partnered with you on that issue. I don't believe the others have actually done that. So can you address that, please?
I think we did not have what we, what would typically be called a Phase 1, 21E completed on this property. We would, we would do that at sort of the next stage. If others had have done that as part of their proposal, that's certainly their prerogative. But we, we have dealt with, almost all the projects that I just showed you had significant environmental issues. And we've been able to overcome them through a variety of means, through either just, you know, dealing with it as a project cost, which we are certainly used to, or utilizing Brownsville tax credits. You know, those are tools in place privately and publicly to address those types of issues and have experience in all of them.
Fair enough. And then the other question I had was with respect to the $900,000 contribution. I could also take the perspective that the town has already committed some significant resources by paying almost a half a million, over a half a million dollars for the new sewer connection to that site, as well as the site itself. If you take a look at those two parcels together, where you actually offered to us at a rate which is, which seems reasonable in terms of that amount of land and structures in the downtown area. Granted, you're looking to level the entire site and not look, utilize any of the existing buildings. If, is it, is it possible to look at that differently? Because I think that's problematic for us. I mean, in terms of, I mean, we certainly want to try and provide affordable housing, but to come up with a $900,000 contribution where you pay us $400,000 and ask for $900,000 back, doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense financially.
And I think we're up for that conversation if, if you'd like to have it with us. We, we offered a financial model that we know works. And I think we're up for that conversation if you'd like to have it with us. We offered a financial model that we know works, that we have a track record with, and that provides an added benefit that may or may not have value to some people in the room. And every community feels differently about affordable housing and the need for affordable housing. And that's fine. And that's why we come, you know, to have a discussion and start that discussion and would be happy to continue that if the board would like to.
Yeah, just briefly, so much for technology. So mine's more around the density. So your plan shows thirty-two to forty bedrooms, twenty-two units, so thirty-two to forty. Thirty-two to forty bedrooms on twenty-two units, plus two thousand square feet of retail. But you're showing twenty-two parking spaces. Have you looked at where, first of all, per the zoning or what the zoning would show versus what you actually need? And where would those people park?
So we highlighted in our zoning computation chart that that commercial parking may be an issue. We've done a bunch of things. Obviously, if we were to kind of move forward, we'd want to commission a traffic analysis to understand, you know, what the impact of this development might be. And then we see that, you know, there's quite a bit of parking around your common. So we would think that could be utilized for the commercial. So that was just something we were thinking about initially. But again, you know, this is a proposal and the start of a conversation in our mind.
We also, just to piggyback on that, in Haverhill, those two projects, property line directly on the building footprint, we were able to work with the city to rent basically underutilized parking that they had nearby. And they saw it as a great use of an existing facility to get some more income off of that. So there's definitely some creative solutions that we've been a part of as well.
And then just to touch briefly on, so that parcel between Market Street and the big rectangular building there, where you have the, yeah, that whole area, would your development work without that? Because it's not part of the request for a proposal.
Yeah, we apologize if we misunderstood that.
Oh, no, I'm not hammering it, but would, if the density went down, would the numbers still work for you?
We would certainly have to take a look at it. I think the answer is probably of that percentage, we could figure it out.
Okay. Thank you.
One other question on other projects you've done. Have you ever done anything in a smaller community? Everything kind of listed was city-type stuff. So what's the smallest community you've ever done anything in?
Probably the smallest community is Redding. And I would say the most similar to Foxborough is Redding, that we've permitted and we're getting ready to start the project. Right here, fifty-five units. And in terms of small projects, the nineteen-unit project, the twenty-four-unit project in Haverhill.
And I'm currently developing fifty-seven units in Bridgewater, which is in the permitting process right now.
Anybody on the board have any other questions?
We're going to be on our time here, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Why don't we go with Gibson's next? Introduce yourself while we're getting going, Dave.
Hi, Jimmy Brown, Partner of Kitchen Partners LLC, Two-Van Dornav, resident of Foxborough.
James Gibson of Foxborough?
Rob Lucente, also with Kitchen Partners LLC, Twenty-Four Hayden Drive here in Foxborough.
Engineer Frank Gallagher.
Jessica James, Twenty-Five Camp Road, Foxborough, with Gibson Corner Realty Trust. Is there? Oh, so is there, if I stand here and?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. There we go. So thank you for giving us this opportunity to come in here tonight. We know this has been, you know, a big process for the town. We thank the board, we thank Mr. Keegan, Page, the Economic Development Committee. It's great that we got, you know, three bids. We're happy to be one of them. We just wanted to give you an overview of our concept, talk about our differentiators, and just talk about our value proposition with our concept. So we have definitely hometown pride. We're all, you know, from Foxborough. I grew up here, I'm raising my family here. We really are invested in this, not just as developers, just as community members also. We're excited about the uptown revitalization. We've been engaged in uptown revitalization for quite some time now. We've redeveloped, you know, over twenty-five thousand square feet in Foxborough Center already. We have, you know, we're great landlords. We've got a hundred percent occupancy in all of our buildings, mixed-use and residential. So we're very proud of that. We want to continue, we want to grow on that. And we're just really excited about what we can do for the town. We're excited about our concept with our business partners. Our business partners are behind Union Straw. They want to grow on their concept, change that based on feedback they've received on their restaurant.
And we're sort of working in tandem here as a group and as a partnership in terms of our proposal here. So I know you have our proposal in hand, so we won't dig too deep into the specifics that you have. But what we're focusing on is really the why we developed the proposal we developed and why we presented, what we presented to the board and to the town, and how we responded to the proposal. And as we're sitting here through the meeting today and listening to the earlier discussion about the development and the housing and taking feedback from the community into how do we build on keeping our people in Foxborough, it's important for us to sort of center it around, that's been at the heart of everything we pulled together in our proposal is really Foxborough, thinking about Foxborough and how do we keep that at the center of our discussion. So before we dig into the specific details about the site plan and how we propose to utilize the space, we think it's important to highlight some of the key differences that we think our U.D. proposal brings to the town of Foxborough. Number one, we're embedded in the community. That's why we're here. That's why we're here today. That's why we pulled together our proposal. It's important to us. Our children all go to school here. They also work, are in the sporting programs. My children have all gone the little footsteps right next door to where we're hoping to open our second restaurant. And we just think it's important to highlight that it makes a difference to the town and to our future within our community that we live. It's led by Foxborough families. That's the, basically, the essence of our partnership with Gibson. And there's a commitment to ensuring that we meet the vision of Foxborough. We understand it's about driving revitalization and making sure that there's an energetic feel at the common, and that's something that we all, I think, on Founder's Day or any one of those spring days, we look forward to having at our Rotary. And then secondly, is the dedicated team. This is your team. This is the team that's been working with the town of Foxborough for a long time. For us on Kitchen Partners LLC, at least over the course of the last eighteen-plus months in getting Union Straw off the ground. And this is the dedicated team that will continue to work and support this project and drive this project forward.
Thank you. And the biggest differentiator with our concept is the impact. We really wanted to focus on low impact. It felt right for us. Our most recent project on Eight Mechanic Street, where the Union Straw is, when we purchased the old American Legion, we looked at that site and thought, you know, what should we do with it? We could have gone up and added more residential units. We could have, you know, where the parking lot is, put a separate building to get more density. We didn't feel that was right. We didn't want to burden the parking issues that are there already. We didn't want to add density to that site. It didn't feel right for us. And we feel the same with the firehouse. We don't want to burden parking for other businesses. We want people to be able to easily come to a restaurant, a community restaurant, and not be burdened by parking issues. With our low impact, we also, we gain an accelerated timeline by, you know, keeping the existing firehouse structure and leaving the rest of the property for green space and parking. We're looking at a restaurant open this time next year. So just think about that. When we conceptualize that, that keeps us energized and motivated about this project. Like, think about being able to gather there with your families this same time next year.
And just to add on to the community restaurant, ultimately, we'll dig into a little more detail there, but it's going to be different. We certainly want to develop on the brand that we built with Union Straw. We want to take all the feedback that we've heard from our friends, our neighbors, many of you, and make sure that we're filling the other void that's needed in town, which is something that's a little bit different in concept, more communal-based, more at a different price point and different types of fast, but also great casual food that we can make present for the community. So we'll dig into that a little bit more, but I think it's important to make sure that it's understood that we're not looking to do the same thing. We're looking to add to the restaurant scene here in Foxborough. And one other touch before, on the team, before we move into the specifics of the site plan, it's about building on success. And it's about building on success that's taken place here in Foxborough. I think that's absolutely critical to highlight to the board and to the people that are here. There's been a longstanding relationship between Gibson Corner Realty and the town, and we're proud of what we've been able to accomplish in a short period of time working with the town, with Kitchen Partners LLC. So beyond the fact that we live in town, which we're proud of, the Warriors, of course, right? We're also excited about being able to leverage the strong foundation and the relationships that we built with each one of you standing there in front of us now as we hopefully have an opportunity to work on the second project.
And Frank, I don't know if you want to step up. I'd like you to review a little bit of our site plan, but I just wanted to get into a bit more of our thoughtful concept here. This is a sensitive area. You know, Rock Hill is named that street for a reason. Blasting, underground, parking was not in our recommendation at all. Because of that, we know these are tight roads. We know that there's already parking issues around the common. We don't want to exacerbate that. We want to, we want to allow green space and parking and keep with the aesthetic of the town and keep that quaint, historic downtown we all know and love. So if you just want to kind of talk to us about the site plan, give us an overview.
Sure. Is this okay here, or should I move a little closer maybe?
A little closer, huh? That's good.
Okay. So I'll just go over a few things. Probably the biggest is that this proposal just uses the existing building that's there. Doesn't expand on it, doesn't detract, doesn't take anything away from it. It just leaves the existing building intact and remodels from the inside, basically. It does change the front. You saw the front view. But the proposal is for a restaurant, first floor, the front portion of the building, the part that faces School Street. And then to the rear portion of the building, it's going to be, it's proposed to be five residential apartments, and they're one-bedroom apartments. The restaurant would have a patio out front, and so, you know, on nice days, you'd have seating outside, just, you know, to some extent. The funeral home that's in the rear at the corner of Rock Hill and Market, this proposal is to take that building down and put a parking lot there. And in doing that, we gain thirteen new parking spaces. On-site, we're also proposing five other parking spaces. So that gives one for each residential unit. There's a separate entrance to each of the five residential units. There's a, you know, we're proposing a sidewalk that would go around the building. There's a proposed courtyard that would be utilized by those residences, and that's to the rear of that existing fire station building. The front of the restaurant would be landscaped. We showed on our site plan a retaining wall, or at least, you know, we're calling it a retaining wall. We're not quite sure what that would wind up looking like, but it would be something at the street line, basically. Beyond that, just quantifying it, it's, the proposal is for three-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty square feet that would go toward the restaurant. And then the rest of it would be residential. I've got a couple of floor plans that give you a sense for what each of those residences would look like. They're, all of them are just a little bit under nine-hundred square feet. One of them is actually just under eight-hundred square feet. But you can see, this is a typical unit with an entrance. This one has an entrance to the rear or essentially around the building. And these are the second-floor, I think, units.
Yes, those are the second floors. So when you're looking at the firehouse, you can see the second story, not where the additions came about in the sixties. This is where that second level would be, these upstairs apartments.
And so they're basically a one-bedroom, which is here, bathroom, and a living area with kitchen.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
The second floor is actually over the restaurant, it's in the front.
Okay.
I'm looking at a bed.
These are the first.
And then the two apartments, yeah, there's three in the second, and then there's two in the first.
So, you know, that gives you a sense for what you'd be looking at, one-bedroom apartment units. So again, I think, you know, what I think we'd like to stress here is that we use the existing building, and the impact is minimalized because of that. And, you know, again, just to reiterate, not only is, you know, what that means, among other things, is that when, you know, when the impact is minimalized, the project goes online that much quicker.
Yeah, it definitely, it helps our timeline, for sure. That's one of our big differentiators. And it's not just, it's not just the timeline, too. It's just disruption to the community. You know, Market Street, that area, has had a lot of work done recently to tie in that town sewer, improve that, you know, water and sewer. We hear residents talk about it, you know, we hear the feedback. We don't want them to have to endure a longer-term project than what we're proposing here. It's also lower density means less cars for residents, less water, less sewer, less just overall. And we know there's a need for more density in the town center. We just think it's better suited for other sites like Wall Street, you know, the buildings behind Bay Colony. There's definitely a need for it there, and there's definitely areas to serve that need. We just don't feel that this is the site to do it.
And then? And sort of to wrap things up, just to put a little bit more of a wrapper around our concept within the restaurants. our concept within the restaurant space, um, what, what we, what we're planning to, to put in place there is, is a, is a shared communal seating with an impressive mason wood fire stove, really focused on integrating the large windows that are able to open during the, during the warm weathers, but also communal long wooden tables with firewood, firewood food and craft beer program. So the way we look at it when we, when we think of our concept is environment, food and beverage, and atmosphere. So when we looked, looked at all three of our core principles in developing this concept for the restaurant, we took the, the town's sort of mission as part of the revitalization, and we looked at the environment and said, we need to leverage the existing firehouse, number one, because when we did it at, at the Legion, we got some really beautiful beams out of it, and we think we could do the same with the rustic look and, and, and the brick, uh, within, within the firehouse. Open communal seating brings an inviting, community feel, family-friendly, something that we think will, will really drive a lot of activity. That'll drive the atmosphere, vibrant, lively, fun-filled atmosphere, urban rustic feel. But around the food, it's going to be fast casual concept, but with really approachable pricing and family cuisine themed, so wood-fired pizzas, wood-fired wings, meatballs, street tacos, all supported by a really strong local beer, craft beer, uh, bar program along with distilleries. And we think it's important, because of the success we've seen in our, our original restaurant, to continue to rotate out the, the, the different flavors of beers that, that everybody wants to try, and based on some of the connections that we've been able to establish through our partnership through that restaurant, we've actually, uh, got some, some pretty rare things, um, types of beers on tap, uh, that we can bring over there. So, so that's sort of the, the overall look to, to our concept. Anything to add, Rob?
I think you nailed it. I, um, the end of the day, I believe this concept is what Foxborough needs. We don't have anything like that in town right now. Um, one, one piece that I, I just feel like is so important there, too, is that, you know, we're, we're, we're here in town, we've all approached the Rotary at quarter or five, Monday through Friday. We know what that traffic jam, whether you're coming up mechanic or on 140, it's a lot going on there. We are trying to thoughtfully come up with a plan that would actually add, uh, a nice landmark restaurant to the town, but also not interrupt the charm, the quaint feel that we already have by putting up a, a megastructure, um, here for, for, um, uh, for our downtown area. Not to mention that one thing, just in doing some quick math here, I hear the parking spaces that are there for the tenants, I also feel like this is a proposal there, too, where there's a clear and solid thirteen space plan for additional, uh, parking. I, I, I mean, I don't want to say public parking without stepping on developers' toes, but I do believe that's going to be made open to the, the community and not just reserved for, uh, the tenants or their guests.
Well, yeah, I mean, we do understand if, you know, someone's seeing a show at the Marilyn Rodman Center, plans to dine after at the restaurant, or vice versa, they're probably not going to move their car. They're probably gonna, you know, if the parking is available, they're gonna take it. Um, you know, we, we always make sure to partner with our neighbors, whatever development we do. We've, um, you know, partnered very well with the landlords, um, you know, neighboring us on Mechanic Street. We actually joined forces in repaving the parking lot there, um, adding some curbing, doing some things that would just, you know, better enhance it for not just our site, but our neighboring sites as well. Uh, we want, we want to work with our neighbors, we want to work with the town. We've proven that we, we do that, we want to continue it.
Is that there up there?
Oh, um, yeah, just, that kind of wraps it for us. I just, I had to put this picture up. Anytime you hear Foxborough on the news, they show Foxborough, it's this image. It's this, you know, usually you've got the, the, um, Foxborough town sign in there as well, but you've got this in the background. I don't want to lose that. So thank you for the opportunity to let us come here tonight, talk to you about our concept, hope you like the low density, the smaller concept, and, um, any questions you have, we would love to answer them.
Anybody on the board have any, uh, questions?
Uh, just, when you're redeveloping a building like this, it's a little different than the strict stick structure, the, you know, the wooden. How much have you looked into the building for the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, structural, 21E? So you'd, you'd get in there and find out afterwards, or have you looked at it between today and when the RFP went out?
Yes, we have to have 21E Phase One, and then a 21E Phase Two. Do they actually drill, drill holes in the soil?
We've, we've done, we've done 21Es with the bank that we're partnering with. We've been partnering with them for a while. We talked to them about this. They looked at the Phase One, the Phase Two, the Phase Three that's done in the past. They really weren't that concerned. They did say possibility of a Phase Two.
No, there is going to be a Phase Two.
That, yeah, that there is going to be a Phase Two. They want to do their due diligence. Uh, we do as well, but they weren't, they weren't alarmed at what they saw when they looked back at reports. So they know that there's already been some due diligence there. And, you know, we did, we, we walked through it with our electrician, with plumbing. We've, we've talked to professional, um, demolition services, you know, they've, they've guided us on what we can expect in terms of asbestos mitigation and removal, lead, you know, it's, we're definitely prepared. We know what to expect, we know that there's going to be a lot of work to do, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, just more of a question for Paige, um, or Kevin. Uh, in the F-Cod, uh, zoning, is parking, excess parking allowable use?
You can't have a primary lot alone. You can't have access. I mean, you just couldn't have a standalone parking lot.
So how, how does this?
Well, this is all a mix, I mean, it's all in one site.
Tied into the restaurant and the, tied in mainly as a, as a mix of a restaurant and, and surrounding.
Yeah, it's not designed to just deconstruct a, a, a building to the ground, but a, a parking lot only.
Yeah, the parking, the parking is really for the building. We just know that, you know, we're not gonna have a police officer out there making sure that everyone that steps out of their car is going into the restaurant. We understand that, you know, things are going to happen. We just, we, we're thinking this as one project site. We don't think of it as two parcels for two buildings. We think there should be the firehouse with parking behind. When we look at, you know, the property across the street at Rock Hill, where the church is and the daycare, we love the aesthetic of the open space with parking. We want to, we want to mirror that. We want that same aesthetic. It's a neighborhood, but it's also on the common. We think that really, um, complements both.
And, and it's a huge sacrifice to us financially, because I could put a building there, so there's no, there's no income coming from the, from that whole lot. So essentially, it's more or less just donated, because there's no income, zero. It's a huge sacrifice.
Mr. Jim? Thank you, and, and nice job on the presentation. It was really well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
And appreciate your, uh, your local flavor and, and local interest in, in the project. So the question I have is, relates back to the density itself, because, um, you know, experience tells us that, you know, downtown areas in particular require greater density because that's what helps supports business, local businesses to, to help thrive and, and do well in the downtown areas. So you're only proposing five units. Um, I, I, I just wonder why you're going with that low of a number as opposed to, um, the, I think the other proposals were in the nineteen to twenty-two range in terms of units. And I, and I, I can understand going to, to a lower number because that was the kind of strategy you're, you're invoking in terms of trying to limit the amount of activity in that particular area, but in, in downtown area in particular, uh, having greater density is actually a bonus to the community as well as, as a, a bonus to the businesses that, that, that surround it. So could you maybe speak to that a little bit better, uh, because I think five is, is seems like a small number to me.
Yeah, I mean, we, we looked at a, a number of options. Um, for a while, we were eight. We were strong with eight. And then we just still felt that eight was too much. Five felt good when we looked at, we started getting into, sorry, the, um, the project site and parking, five was the number for us. The reason being, we understand the importance of getting residents in the town center. We want it to be walkable and lively and, you know, that's, that's a vision for us along with the rest of Foxborough. We think that that is going to be served on other properties in the area, like Wall Street, behind Bay Colony. He's building more units on Mechanic Street where he already has some now. I mean, when, when we feel right about it, we absolutely want to support a larger density of residential units in town center. We just don't feel that it's right for this project site.
Just, just one other thought that, is that the, the downtown, um, the parking area that you spoke of, Jim, earlier about, you know, that, there's really not a good use for that. I mean, one thought could be that you, that you build above the parking spaces and leave the parking spaces intact, but then build above them, um, which could, which would gain some additional units and then also preserve the parking at the same time.
The only thing is, if you do that, you have an insurance liability, so you have to control who parks in your space.
Understood.
So it's like gated off. So know it, so anybody that proposes that, that, that's going to be gated, because there's a huge liability in having that space under a building.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And the whole reason why five units is we're just giving back, we're thinking of our neighbors. We're giving back spaces for all the neighbors, the theater, the church, the, you know, it's a, it's a critical, that spot's a critical spot, you know, to do any high density.
And keeping with the neighborhood aesthetic on that side of the, of the project site.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Frank, is this the same one that was submitted?
No, this is going to be the, uh, slides you'll be seeing tonight.
Okay. You guys want to just introduce everybody?
Yep. Um, Attorney Frank Spleen, Foxborough, Massachusetts, here representing Douglas A. King Builders, Inc., with regard to the proposal in front of Board of Selectmen in the town of Foxborough this evening. With me this evening is, um, William Buckley of Bay Colony Group, civil engineer on the project. Uh, Douglas Anino, who is the architect on the project of Anino, Cooperative North Attleboro. We have Doug King, owner and operator of Douglas A. King Builders, Inc. And at the very end, we have Frank Altieri and Jim McSherry, who are the co-owners and founders of, uh, Shovel Town Brewery, Inc. Uh, also on our, um, team, but not here with us this evening, is Michael Toomey, who is, um, an executive vice president with, uh, Boston Environmental Corp. of Fockton. I just wanted to bring that up because, um, they've conducted some preliminary investigations of the buildings and the properties and issued a rough cost estimate, uh, for the environmental conditions, which we took into consideration when making our proposal to the town. And the environmental conditions is one of the biggest unknowns on the project, uh, because both, you know, the fire station, um, that is there now, a lot of the work was done there during its years, uh, when it was used, and a lot of the oils and things like that gone into the soils there, and there was an oil spill at one time there also. Um, the funeral home, uh, had other chemicals there, too. So it's one of the unknowns, uh, that we had to take into consideration with regard to this project. Um, again, we'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen, uh, the town departments, uh, administration of Town Foxborough for giving us this opportunity. Um, again, with regard to the proposal for the fire station on School Street and the funeral home on Market Street, our offer is four hundred and five thousand dollars, which is the highest, uh, offer the town has received. We've also received the highest score from the EDC, and we feel that in our proposal, we addressed all the issues that were outlined in the RFP, um, the best of any of the proposals. With regard to our proposal, uh, the former fire station, uh, will be maintained, except the very last two garages will be, um, demoed. Uh, our restaurant brewery will be on the first floor. Uh, it's going to be Station One by Shovel Town Brewery, and there'll be two one-bedrooms and two studios, uh, on the second floor. The restaurant will be approximately forty-six thousand square feet. There'll be, uh, eighty indoor dining seats, uh, twenty-eight bar seats around a U-shaped bar, and there will be an outside patio with thirty-six, uh, outside patio seats during the warmer weather. The, uh, former funeral home on the corner of Market and Rock Hill Street will be demolished, and apartment complex, uh, building will be, uh, built there new. There'll be fifteen one-bedroom, uh, units within the building, and, uh, underground, there will be fifteen underground parking spaces for the apartments. Uh, between the two buildings, we'll be constructing a parking lot, uh, with eleven parking spaces, uh, for the residential and the restaurant patrons that'll be in the firehouse. Uh, this density, um, and mixed use are allowed within, under our current zoning. This use has also been recommended within the downtown study, uh, the master plan, the vision study, and the yield study, with regard to the, all those studies look for greater density. One of the things they were looking for is hopefully a restaurant in the, uh, fire station, if it could have been maintained, or in a new building there, and residential above that building, as well as another building, um, on, on the, on the property somehow. For example, in the vision study, I'd like to point out, it recommended, uh, the fire station would be four stories and retail slash restaurant on the main floor, while the funeral home would be a four-story apartment complex, uh, building, uh, with as many as twenty-seven units in that building. It fulfills, our proposal fulfills, um, all the recommendations within the Foxborough Central, Foxborough Center overlay district bylaws, the design review, uh, overlay district and its standards, and all those studies I just addressed. It adds new residents, uh, to the downtown area, which has been a primary goal of the town of Foxborough in all these studies, to get a more vibrant downtown area. Uh, we talked about having a walk-around, uh, walkabout, um, town center. In order to do that, you, uh, one of the goals is to get more residential, um, units in the downtown area, and this provides that. Again, you know, the, uh, two thousand and three strategy study, um, outlines that. The redeveloped property, uh, will generate approximately seventy-six, seventy-six thousand dollars of additional, uh, real estate revenue to the town, as well as meals tax, uh, revenue. The restaurant will, would create approximately twenty to twenty-five new jobs, and, uh, there'll be a sewer connection fee to the town of approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, with regard to the scheduling, um, King Builders has a very good track record of, uh, coming in on time within which their, uh, projects are done. If, um, um, we are chosen to, uh, move forward with this, we're going to have to come up with a purchase and seal agreement, have a closing. After that, we'll be doing permitting and, um, also at the same time, environmental, uh, review to determine exactly what we have to do. We feel once construction starts, each of the, uh, buildings can be construction, constructed in approximately a year. We feel that, um, we could be, again, on the fire station property June of this year, and hopefully have it finished and open and operating, uh, by May of two thousand and twenty. The apartment building, uh, we'll probably wait to start construction September of this year, and hopefully have it done in the fall of two thousand and twenty, depending, again, on weather conditions and other things. During the permitting process, uh, we are open to working with the town and the different, um, communities we have to go in front of. We've got suggestions on the building's looks and, um, layouts and things like that, as is the permitting process is typical. Um, this, this site, as shown, cannot be further developed, and it's being used to its highest and best use. At this time, I'd just like to turn it over to Douglas Anino to go over the architectural aspect of it.
Good evening. We're very, very excited about this project. It's a rehabilitation of an existing structure that does have some architectural merit to it, and the opportunity to provide a vibrant activity on this very important corner is really going to be a great opportunity. So I think not only for the developer, but the architecture and the town, it really adds to that corner. What we propose to do, as Frank said, is take two of the garage bays off the existing building in order to make room for the new parking lot, and then to renovate the existing structure. So that would be new roof, new windows, new doorways, new glass storefronts where the existing fire apparatus bays were, a new entryway, which would also be probably aluminum storefront or something in character with the building, and also adding lighting to make it a little more theatrical and a little more exciting, especially at night, awnings, gooseneck lights on the awning. So there's an opportunity to really create a space, place at this corner. Obviously, we'd have an outdoor seating area for dining and congregating, and that would be fenced in to keep patrons in our, on our site. But we would fully renovate the first floor. That would hopefully be, Shovel Town would occupy that floor, it'd be a full-service restaurant and also a brewery, so it gives an opportunity for dynamic activities on this site. And the upstairs of this facility would feature four units, two one-bedroom units and two studio units. And the tower would probably house maybe an observation, if we can get people up there, observation area, but we'd put windows on the open tower to make it more weatherproof and keep it from getting too damp inside. Obviously, the, we'd have to provide a second means of egress to the space, so there would be an exterior stairway, which is shown on the Rock Hill Street elevation, that has a lot of glass in it, but that would be a glass-enclosed stairway to really make it light and airy and keep the new addition a little separate from the existing, further identify it. Awnings add vibrancy and color and really a sense of place to the restaurant, so we'd suggest putting those on the windows at the lower level. All these are really preliminary ideas to give both a developer and the town an opportunity to get excited about the project. Certainly, we have a long way to go if we're chosen. We have planning, we have many meetings with the town to undertake to make sure that it's in character and in keeping with what you've got, what the town would like to see on that After the restaurant is renovated, next to the, there'd be a parking lot in between the restaurant and the new residential building we propose on the corner of Rock Hill, and that would be a three-story structure with the fourth, the lowest level, a parking area for the residents of that structure. So there'd be 15 apartments in that structure and 15 parking spaces underneath it. It would be buried in the grade because the grade really varies from the end of Rock Hill to School Street. It's approximately 11 foot in elevation change there. So we're able to create a front entrance from the parking lot in the middle between the fire station and the apartment building. And that would be clad in brick and probably a hardy plank or a clapboard, more traditional residential feel, trying to transition down to the residential neighborhood that borders this site, reinforcing the corner, which is important at that corner, to reinforce that change in the commercial, more vibrant district to the residential district as we go down the street. I think that's probably.
One of the things I'd like to point out is Douglas A. King Builders has built an apartment complex building similar to that on the state hospital land now, and is fully occupied and came out very nicely. But at this time, I'd like to ask Frank Altieri and Jim McSherry of Shovel Town Brewery just to talk about the restaurant.
Sure. Thank you. Once again, thank you for the time tonight. We're very excited to be part of this project, bringing a neighborhood unique experience, which we provide. Little bit our story, we started in 2017. We opened up in a historical Ames shovel factory, worked with Doug King Builders to renovate, keep the brick, keep the large windows, once again, keep the building in the shape that it is in, once again, the historic location. We also work with the community, very heavy handling. We've done many events with the community, we're very involved with the community. People look at Shovel Town Brewery as more of a unique spot, a spot where they can come, they can gather, and once again, the fabric of the community. That's what we look, we're very unique. We have beers that are produced on-site. I know with this project, we're looking to do more than that. We have a taproom, a very vibrant taproom, the food menu is very unique. We take the taproom itself, we have pictures from local artists. Once again, we sell this art, but also part of the fabric of what we do. We try to support the community as best we can. Once again, we have a, looking, since we've been open two years, a little over two years, February 2nd, we've expanded four times, just the growth and just the power of what craft beer and craft, once again, type of restaurant brings to the community.
As, Frank Altieri, I'm one of Jim's partner on Shovel Town Brewery, and the concept that we envision for Station One would be that of a destination brewery and affordable restaurant with upscale gastropub-type food. We are planning a wood-fired oven and wood-fired cooking, as well as some traditional cooking. We'll have a showcase brewery that will be able, will produce some of the beer that we will consume there, and it'll all be open for tours and also being able to show the brewing process. The food selection will be, as I said, gastropub-type offerings, and we'd seek to differentiate slightly from any other restaurants in the area, so we don't have overlap necessarily in that space. As Jim said, we provide a very accommodating atmosphere, very atmosphere-friendly. We have families in all the time, even though it's a brewery, it's really a restaurant. We always, on Saturdays and Sundays, lots of families come in there, and we are family-friendly. We, the brew house and brewing operations will be in service, and people can see actually the brewing process as it's being done. We are committed to farm-to-table and local, using local resources, and we have a track record of doing that. We grow some hops at Langwater Farms. We use all of Langwater Farms ingredients and season in our restaurant and our food offerings, and we've teamed with a number of local restaurants to work with them in different ways to bring unique offerings to our business. We're members of the American Brewers Association, as well as members of the Mass Brewers Association, Mass Brewers Guild, and we're also in the process of joining the American Distillers organization. We plan to also bring distilling to that site, a small batch distilling, which is really a growth area now in the beverage program. We will have, offer not only beer, not only our beer, but other beer from other great breweries around the area, as well as craft cocktails and craft spirits in our offerings. Our, as I said, our beverage program will include brewing on-site and craft distilling eventually. As far as the community engagement, Jim touched on it a little bit before. We are, we've always been very friendly. We're recognized as a place to go in the community. People, we get comments all the time that it's a unique location, it's very friendly, it feels like, you know, an atmosphere where people can really be themselves and enjoy themselves there. We also hold events all the time to raise money for different charities and civic organizations, and that's been a fabric of our business since the beginning. We currently employ 15 people. Actually, Jim just indicated that we brought on two more people, you know, within the last week, so we're at 17 in Easton, and then we think, you know, we put down 20 to 25 people, and on our reevaluation, we're probably going to be closer to 30 to 50 people that we would employ in Foxborough in our operation. Let's see what else I have. Oh, yeah, around the brewing operations, so we plan to use, try to maximize the capacity here, but we won't have enough capacity to fully service the bar there. Based on feedback we had when we met with town officials, they were a little concerned that we would have a production brewery there, and that's not our intention. We just intend to have a showcase brewery that will showcase our products and showcase our capabilities, while also enjoying other local beers that are in the area. We have, we currently operate in such a way where we are trying to use our resources as efficiently as possible. We recycle our grains and we capture our wastewater so that we can process that and not put it into the septic system that we're operating under. Now, with, when we originally looked at being on our town wastewater treatment plant, we actually submitted our documentation to the town DPW manager who oversees that, and he sent it to the wastewater consultant. And actually, what came back was that the products that we were going to enter into the waste system was beneficial to the waste system and actually reduced the need for additional chemicals or bio products that wastewater treatment would have to put in. So it was a very positive feedback at that time, no really, no real impact on the wastewater treatment plant. That being said, we know that there are opportunities now, the technology has changed since when we first started to what's up now, and there's opportunities to implement some wastewater treatment, on-site wastewater treatment in a small package that will help us use those kind of products going forward. So that's where we're at with the brewing operations.
My name's Doug King, and I want to thank you for letting us bid on this project. We're excited about it. It's the type of project that we've been doing for years. We've just been at the Foxborough State Hospital reuse for over 10 years, a little longer than we thought, but there was, we're down, we built over 102 units there. In, before Foxborough, we were in the Eastern Center, we did over 20 buildings there, 12 historic reabs, and we're built in most of the budding towns here. Walpole, we did the Bird School, we still own that. We're a buy-and-hold, manage, develop, build, manage, and hands-on company. We like the team aspect, and like Jim and Frank, we give back to every community that we're building in and glad to do it. And everything we do, we try to do each project better than the last, and we're proud of our development, and we're excited about this, and we, we think that this type of development in filling, it is important to, one, keep the fabric of the firehouse and get some units in there, and also put additional units, the 15 units where the funeral home is now, and underground parking, we think is the thing, it's something we're doing in Rainham, Easton, and we did it in Foxborough. And we look forward to working with you people like we have in the last 10-plus years. We might never get out of Foxborough. Thank you.
I'd just like to wrap up. When this opportunity first came, oh, Mr. King brought Mr. Buckley and I in to discuss what is the town looking for here. And Mr. Buckley and I, you know, are knowledgeable in the town, specifically with the different studies and what the town was going for. And again, those studies really emphasized retail slash restaurant there with apartments, to really try to revitalize the downtown, and that's how this proposal was kind of put together with that in mind. And with that, we've been trying to get as much input as we can from the different town employees, department heads and all that. Shovel Town, as they indicated, met with different town departments, department heads, employees to really get their feedback. Mr. Buckley's had numerous conversations. Again, Boston Environmental also came out and really looked at the structure. So we've really tried to get a good feel of what the town wants and what is there. And we feel that we've shown that in the proposal we've given to the town and the amount that we're proposing for the offer, as well as the whole presentation. So with that, we'd like to thank you for this time. If anyone has any questions.
Anybody on the board have any questions? I just have two. The parking lot in between the two buildings, how many cars is that going to be?
11.
11 cars, okay. Question, and Bill, you might know this, where they're doing a brewery and brewing on-site, that's a different license.
Well, it depends if it's, if they file under a 19C license, Farmers Brewers License.
So that's what the license you would.
Farmers Brewers License, correct.
But the intent is for a full liquor license here, because they will be serving other alcoholic drinks.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, just to be clear, the Farmers Brewers License allows us to produce and sell. The pouring license allows us to pour, so whatever, the liquor license would allow us to pour.
Okay, okay.
All right. So Jim, just a couple of questions. First of all, thank you for your presentation, it was really well-done, and as was everybody's presentation tonight, I'm really grateful for everybody doing this. This is exciting for the Town of Foxborough in so many different ways to see the revitalization of that area come about finally into the future. Just a couple of questions about the building design in the rear. How flexible are you with respect to the outside look of that? Because I, as I look at that outside look, I'm wondering if more of a colonial look might fit better for the downtown area, as opposed to the more standard, you know, apartment style look that you proposed for that.
During the permitting process, we have to go through a design review committee, the planning board, and we're more than open to taking feedback, making any reasonable changes that are there. But yes, we're more than open.
That's just a personal observation I saw. It's, it just strikes me as one, I think it's, you know, I understand the concept completely, but I think more of a colonial look for the downtown Foxborough area might fit a little bit better. Just a thought. Second thing is, I'm just curious about the space, the parking space in between the buildings. Curious as to why you didn't just connect the building, the apartment building to there and just maybe put the parking to the rear in this case, because you, obviously, you got the slope that works with the building? I was curious.
The slope works for the building, but I felt as a planner that it was important to reinforce that corner. And what I didn't want to happen was a parking lot at that corner, it's too important for that. So I felt the facade, the vertical facade of the building would be a nice transition to the residential neighborhood instead of a parking lot transition to a residential neighborhood. And speaking to the other design changes, of course, this is very flexible. Last couple of projects we've worked with, planning board closely to develop projects that I think the town is enamored with and worked out quite successfully, so. There's a long way to go.
Yeah, there's ultimately, a lot of people are going to weigh in on that point, but it's just, just an observation. Thank you.
Plus, that's the second building, so it's more time.
That's right, and I think, you know, the fire station concept, similar to what was done with the previous presentation, to try and preserve that for the town, I think it's very important. I think that the town really has, is vested in that type of, that look for the downtown, and there's a lot of history with that building, and I think having that, maintaining that in the downtown, I think is important. It's sort of a legacy-type feel that leaves for the downtown.
It's important to preserve a lot of your heritage.
I agree with that.
I want to just thank all three developers, very, very comprehensive plans in, you know, somewhat short order time-wise, so really appreciate this. This is important, important, you know, cornerstone of the downtown of Foxborough or the uptown of Foxborough, depending on which way you go with that. There is a lot of people here. While we have all three developers, anybody have a question that we didn't think of? You just raised your hand.
Yeah, I just was thinking, when we did the state hospital reuse, the planning board, there was design review, and each building, we had to come to them. It was painful, but it came out good for both sides.
One other thank...
Be sure to keep your name in this.
One other thank you to the Economic Development Committee for sticking with us and getting it to the point we're at. While we have all three developers still here, is there anybody that had a question? Yes, you wanna just come up and state your name?
Mike.
Yeah.
Taylor Ford, I live on Putnam Road in Foxborough. I'm a member of the Historical Commission, and as many of you know, last year, the Historical Commission issued a six-month demolition delay on both of these fire stations and the funeral home. That has since expired, but we are still concerned about the funeral home. We're glad to see the two of the proposals are restoring the fire station. And I'm not familiar with your cost in terms of demolition, so I don't know how much that is gonna cost you to demolish the funeral home itself. But my question, I guess, would be, is there a way to use that cost to move the funeral home to a location if it became available? I don't, does that make any sense at all to you?
Remove it and put it somewhere else?
Put it somewhere else.
On another lot?
Another lot.
We'll look at anything.
I don't know what the cost of demolition is. Is it...
How close is the other lot?
Let's say five or six blocks at the most?
We'd look into that.
It's just an idea that we've been discussing at the commission meetings.
What's the reuse of it?
Well, that's another question. We don't know how it's gonna be reused. We don't know if the whole building would be movable or just the front section maybe where, that has the historical interest for the town.
I would think it can be moved.
I think it can.
Yeah.
But I don't know if it's a cost issue, and it's cheaper to demolish it than it is to try and have somebody move it to a new location.
It'd be cost and time, but they're both related.
But since you've got till September, you said before you're gonna start working on the second building. There's a possibility, something like that, and it's also with the Gibson proposal.
I think that's something we're definitely open to looking into.
Because it is a historic building for the town, and I know demolishing it is easy, but there is some concern with the, with the commission that something could be used, could be moved if the lot opens up.
We did the director's house. Were you on the board then?
Yes.
Yeah, in the Foxborough.
I toured the director's house then, up at the top floor. Yeah, it was very nicely done.
Thank you, Taylor. Appreciate it. All right, so nobody else? Like I said at the beginning, oh, sorry.
I have a quick question.
Yeah, just state your name.
My name's Jason Evans, I'm a Foxborough resident, I live on Castlin Way. Every year, we deal with water restrictions as homeowners, and with the brewery, is there gonna be any significant impact on the town's usage, you know, the water usage? I know there's at least three gallons of wastewater per gallon of beer produced. Is that significant for us as residents or not?
So, first of all, we're not, we're not planning on producing an extraordinary amount of beer in this location, so that's probably not gonna be that much of an issue.
Okay, great, that's all.
Thank you, just a general question.
Yeah. Question, I guess, to Paige and the Economic Development Committee. A question that kind of spans all three applications. We have one application that has the most number of residential, but the smallest square footage of retail. We've got a proposal that has a small number of residential with the medium-sized retail, and then these guys kind of in the middle. Is there a matrix that you could put together that looks at how many employees, how many parking space, I'm looking at parking, how many employees, how many seats in the square footage, and then how many one and two bedrooms, and give us an idea of where that falls? I'm concerned about the parking as everybody is around downtown, but at least it gives us a matrix. When I see two thousand square feet versus thirty-five hundred square feet, it doesn't tell me how many expected parking or expected drivers there are gonna be. So it's not a question for any one individual application, it's, I guess, for all three.
Are you mostly concerned about residential overnight parking or restaurant slash retail type parking?
Both, because if you look at the matrix that we provided, it says, really, it only says how many onsite spaces, but it doesn't give the matrix of how many is needed. So I'm assuming that the residential, since there's no train there, they're gonna be parking there, right? They're gonna have a car. And then all the other spaces, is it one per seat or one per three seats during business hours, not overnight, you know, till whenever it closes?
And I would actually also factor in, have, you know, the employees too.
Yeah, and that's what kind of triggered when you said you had eighty employees. Granted, they're not all there at once, but what does it take to run these establishments and the staff and the waiters?
So on the residential, the studios on the one-bedrooms, which is all that I think should, is needed, they'll, we have fifteen spaces underneath, and we think some of the people probably won't have cars, that, say, older people that might live there, and some of the people might work at the brewery, I, you know, obviously.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and I'm not disagreeing, but having that, that says one parking space per unit, they're gonna live there, you know, across the board for everybody.
Yeah. It's a little misleading when he says thirty to fifty employees. You know, with a restaurant, there's waitstaff, which is heavy, and they're not all gonna be on at the same time, so.
Correct, but, but the people that are there, if we have a gross number, they've gotta park someplace, and then I think we gotta look at what's around the common, what are the other opportunities, because everyone's fighting for the same amount of space as around that little rotary, and it fills up fast.
They can park at Bay Colony at night. The other thing is, the brewery, the shovel shop brewery that'll become the Foxborough Brewery, Station One, should get a fire, pump a fire truck and put that on it, and then take the beer from Easton to Foxborough.
So, Jim, I just wanna point out, the parking for the residential has to be onsite. The parking for the retail, you can use, you know, parking within a certain amount of area. Parking for the restaurant, though, is determined on the usable square foot area. So the number of employees, you know, is it necessary important, you just need to know what the square footage is.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not disagreeing, but you go to some towns, it's not, Doug and Eno knows, so you go into a facility and it says one per so many seats plus employees. Other towns don't do that. Oh, I'm asking, can you just put it in one place so we can say, option A, option B, option C, onsite, offsite, what is, what is needed and what's, you know, it's up to us to see what's around the area.
So you'll need the applicants to give, because it's not a gross number on restaurants, it's a net number.
Why don't we leave it at this, if it's okay with Paige? If you wanna figure out what formula, you need to figure out that number per zoning, and then you reach out to the three applicants? Does that make sense?
All right, again, we will definitely, we'll wait to hear back from Paige. How soon do you think you can get that information, Paige?
As soon as I have the information.
Okay. And we'll plan on putting this on our agenda at our next meeting to make a decision. Again, I want to thank everybody for the time putting this all together, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One question at the next meeting, Mr. Chairman, will we have an opportunity to speak, or is it just the selectmen speaking? Or you want us to leave it open?
Leave it open for right now. Yeah, I mean, we very well may have questions.
That's fine. And if anyone has any questions, you can get, you know, through Paige to us.
Yeah, so that's a good point, if we have questions during the next two weeks.
Yeah, yeah, hold on, everybody.
Hold on.
Hold on, everyone, please, one second.
Yeah, we'll, if we have questions, we'll run it through Paige. Right, does that make the most sense?
She'll communicate that to the various proposers.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks, everyone.
Everybody, stay over here.
The details of all of these...
Yeah. Good presentations. Yeah.
All right, so, little bit behind schedule, so, next up, eight forty-five annual town If you guys just wanna take any discussion on...
Finish that discussion outside, that'd be great, thanks.
So, Bill, do you wanna talk about having to reopen the warrant?
So, so thank you, Mr. Chairman, we do have requests that the warrant be reopened. It was discovered almost the next day that we had a challenge with the warrant article for, the funding article for the Barrow School project. And Mr. Uchner and I had a conversation literally the next day after the night we closed the warrant, and discovered that there was an error in the calculation of the number that's actually needed to fund the project. So what we would do is, I would ask the board to reconsider, to consider reopening the warrant for this one article, to insert this into the town meeting, the annual town meeting warrant. The article would essentially amend Article eighteen, if I'm not mistaken?
Article seven.
Article seven, for the, for the special town meeting that was held in October to fund the project. And with due respect to the specifics, I'll defer to Mr. Uchner on that.
Bill, you wanna come up to the table?
So, but that's essentially the issue.
So I'll start by apologizing, because I should've caught this as well, but the project itself has a funding budget agreement that is done with the state when we go through the process, and that's where their grant money is based on. That funding agreement budget basically was for thirty-four million, six hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and two dollars. The, that document is, again, with the MSBA approved back in August of two thousand and eighteen as part of the funding. And to prove the kind of the point was that we made the mistake in the mathematical side, was that the article that was, or the explanation that was put together by the AdCom calls out that number exactly as what we were looking for funding. So the numbers match what we were trying to. Unfortunately, the actual warrant article, the outcome was that we were short sixty-four thousand. The sixty-four thousand was sixty-four thousand that we were moving from the original seven-hundred-thousand that was done at the annual town meeting in two thousand and sixteen. To start the whole project, we had sixty-four left, we wanted to move that into the construction phase. Unfortunately, it was added into the numbers that we were trying to ask for, and so we ended up sixty-four thousand short, because it's already been accounted for. We already asked for the seven-hundred, which included it. So in the original article that was written up by the finance director at the time, it was written up for thirty-three thousand, nine oh seven, five sixty-seven, exactly sixty-four thousand short. The, the reason that we have to ask for the bonding authority is that even though we will not bond any of the money that we get from the state grant program, which currently is up to a maximum of a little over fifteen million dollars, they still require upfront that you bond the entire project, subject to getting that grant. They have pretty much, you know, already agreed to the grant, but again, they need all the numbers to match, and right now, we don't match by sixty-four thousand. If we do not do this article, we have to go back to ground zero with them and have them go all the way back through the funding agreements and everything else for the sixty-four thousand dollars, and again, they're paying fifty-six percent of that sixty-four, so really, we're talking about a thirty thousand dollar discrepancy to the taxpayer side of it. But it's no different than what with the original whole total cost that we've been proposing since day one. So it really is a, an unfortunate mistake in the proposition, but as Bill said, fortunately, we caught it at this point, because if we can get it done in May, then they will sign off right after that on the, you know, on the grant itself, which is obviously critical for us to continue moving forward. In the meantime, obviously, we're working through all the boards and finishing the plan itself to hopefully go out to bid this summer.
The project itself is moving along quite nicely, actually, so it's right on schedule for the most part.
Okay, so what's before us is, we're gonna need a motion to reopen the annual town meeting warrant.
All right, so move to reopen the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, any discussion to reopen the town warrant?
Just a general, anyone else asked for a warrant to be brought forward and we said no to?
No.
Some motion made, seconded, there was some discussion, all those in favor of reopening the warrant?
Right.
All right, so this now gets added in now...
Well, you would need a motion to add it into the warrant.
Okay, all right.
I don't think I have a motion for that, so do I just need to make it just specific to Article seven, or do I need to talk about a new article number?
New article.
A new article.
The new article number, okay. And what's the new article number? I just don't have it right in front of me. I don't have a motion.
May I have that?
No, I don't.
The schedule?
Okay.
Hold on one second.
You can just, you can just reference warrant article, label...
Okay, all right, so move to amend warrant article for the Mabel and Barrow project.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion?
Yeah, just for clarification, the sixty-four thousand dollars, that's not new money? You're transferring the money from the original seven-hundred thousand?
No, it's new money in the total authorization. The total authorization was supposed to be sixty-four thousand higher. The sixty-four that we were talking about was part of the original seven-hundred thousand that we just, we didn't spend in that phase of the project that we were moving into the construction phase, but it's not, it should never have been formulated in the numbers themselves.
So you're moving the sixty-four into the new authorization?
Yeah, that's already been done, but we need sixty-four more as the total cost of the construction project to match what was the original budget.
So you need an additional sixty-four thousand?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I got it now.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, so motion was made to add the warrant article, Mabel and Barrow School Project, to the annual town meeting, and there was some discussion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Right.
All right.
By moving to close the town warrant, too?
Yes, I would ask you to...
Okay. All right, move to close the annual town meeting warrant.
Quickly.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor to close the warrant?
Right.
All right.
Thank you. All right, so there is, if one wants to have a general discussion about the warrant right now, the only, the only thing that's right now that I know that's different from what you've seen, we actually have some of the wording, and town councils weighed in on all of the wording at this point. The, the one article is the Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee's article, which is Article twenty-nine, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I think from our discussion we had with them at our last meeting, I don't think any of them or anybody on the board was overly in favor of that, so I would almost say...
Article twenty-eight, if I stand corrected.
I would almost say, let's take it off, but it's up to the board, too. Didn't seem like any...
It's still early in the process, I mean, we still have a few more meetings to do to address that, but it seems the general consensus is right now is that that's not, there's no interest in pushing that forward at this point.
We'll just reconfirm with that committee.
Right, there's a meeting coming up this, next week to address some of those concerns.
Anybody else want to discuss anything else on the warrant?
No, I guess I would just say where this is a, this is a lengthier, you know, number of warrants that are on there, maybe we go in there with a plan. Town meeting wise, just length, time to cut off, you know?
Yeah, I guess we would have to talk, talk to the town.
Yeah, I know. You know, it just, it hits me as a lengthier one, and I don't want to lose attendance at town meeting based on the last one and now, you know, this one potentially.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of controversial articles, but you said number, large number.
Right, it's just getting people to stick around, you know, or come and, so held hostage.
Right.
One thing too, you can never plan a town meeting.
No, I know, but...
But nah, good point. Okay. So we're, we're all good on the, um, the warrant? So now we'll move to FY twenty budget discussion.
So the, the board had, had sort of indicated at the last meeting, I think it was Jim had talked about a general budget discussion. I think, Leah, you had raised the same question. So I'm, I'm open to how the board wants to, wants to address that. I mean, we, we, you know, also, I know there was a couple of specific questions relating to public safety as well. So I, the chief, both chiefs are here tonight to address that, if in case there's any specific questions beyond that.
One of the questions I had, um, as far as the AdCom vetting process, Chief Baker or Chief Keller, have you guys been before the AdCom yet?
Would you guys both?
Yeah, you guys want to?
We'd like to make a motion to put Paige Duncan at the end of every selectman's agenda from that one.
Second.
Doing a lot of things. So have you guys been in front of AdCom yet?
We have, yes.
Both? They have questions, concerns?
As always. Uh, it was pretty straightforward, I think. The only questions they, they asked about the famous police chief eight percent raise, which...
Which is really not.
Not an eight percent raise. Uh, so that's been straightened out. It was a mistake by finance inflated that number. And I've made it very clear when we presented the number that, uh, we're negotiating a contract, uh, expecting two percent, two percent. And I've made it very clear that what I'd like is to have my salary increase, if I get one, match what we're, what we're negotiating for, so there's consistency there. Uh, so AdCom understood that and we're satisfied with that explanation. And then, of course, the other thing that was discussed was the, uh, proposal for three additional officers. And we went through that in some detail, uh, consistent with the explanation that the board received, uh, in response to Mr. Parker's, uh, written questions that he had submitted to you. So those were the only two things that we discussed there.
And just the respect to the, uh, the mistake that was made. It wasn't necessarily a mistake, because it was just the timing of how the chief's raise, his, his contract, uh, actually goes into a different fiscal year, into, into the fiscal year. It doesn't actually occur on July one. So there was a catch-up provision in there that, that, so when they actually did the actual calculation, they had not added in the, the previous fiscal year's number. So that was why it was eight instead of four. So it was actually built off the wrong, wrong base. That was just an honest, honest error.
Leah, I know a few meetings back, you had questions on, I don't know if it was Mike's stuff specific, or...
It was, it was Mike's, and now between, I, I've bothered him enough, two meetings and, you know, running into each other, the Patriots rally, I, um, I now understand his position a little bit better. My concern was, you know, level servicing and, and understanding a little bit more about the numbers behind the position. But, um, after our second meeting today, I'm completely comfortable. I understand, you know, where this really is, you know, level services. I understand the numbers, um, and I feel confident that this, that this, this position, we should move forward. So that was my concern, we've had a chance to meet.
You said AdCom let you off easy?
Yeah, Alan, I get off easier than him.
You still have your hair?
I do. Playing the new guy card. I blame Hatfield, you know? I have a couple more months, I think.
He's being a little bit modest, that they were actually very supportive of the new position. They thought it was cutting edge and it was something that we, we can actually lead the way on and something that, and actually will bring, bring revenue into the community that we weren't really accessing before.
Right, yeah.
So...
It was, it was actually, it was very...
It was very positive, actually.
But I'd like to bet, so that's kind of what I thought, is like, why are we being cutting edge? We don't have to be ahead of the edge, let's just, you know, let's stay on the average edge. But now I understand it is more about, you know, catching up with an eye to kind of what's coming in the future, so...
Exactly.
You know, it's not as, that was one of my concerns, was...
Yep.
Oh, being in healthcare myself, I, I found the whole thing fascinating and, uh, what a unique niche that could definitely be.
But there are other communities that are looking to do the same.
That's great.
That's good.
Anybody else have any questions on that?
Not on those particular positions, but I don't know if, you know, when I miss that meeting, just overall budget, like we get here. And we talk about specific stuff and specific numbers, but just, you know, kind of more of a general dialogue. I don't think that's right for right now, but...
So, um, I don't know, does anybody on the board want to speak to anything specific, or, or generally speaking? Because I, I welcome the idea of, of a general dialogue about budgets and theories and, because I, I think there's a lot of information that we could probably get into. I, we had the, the budget, the fiscal summit, uh, a couple of years ago, which allowed us to get into a lot of stuff. But, um, unfortunately, a lot, it was, it was mostly attended by boards and committees and not all, there was very few public members, though it was televised, so, which was, which was positive. But, um, but I, I do welcome that dialogue, because ultimately, what's important to you is important to me. And we want to shape our budget accordingly, so...
And I think the time to do that is coming up, you know? And we need to just be better as a board to actually have that discussion well in advance of, of, you know, having the budget already gone through three or four AdCom meetings and stuff. We've got to just get better at that in the future.
Well, I, I think a lot of it is, is understanding how the budgets are, are developed. I don't think we do a, a good enough job explaining where our revenues come from, um, and how we come up with our expenses. When we say, yeah, we want to, want to do level services, there's a cost to that, okay? There's, there's, um, fixed costs that increase over, every year that, that we don't necessarily have control over. There's pressures on revenue. If you look at where our revenue comes from, I think fifty-five percent comes from taxation. You know, we're below the state average in state aid, uh, across municipalities, but we're well above the state average in local receipts. So we rely heavily on local receipts. If you look at our, at our tax rates, our tax rates are comparable to, to the surrounding communities. We're, we're right in the middle. The thing that, that bothers me is the, is the charter school assessment. We're in the, we're number forty in the state with the highest charter school assessment. We're forty out of three hundred and forty-one communities. I mean, that's, that's high. And that, that's a, that's money that could be going to our public schools. We don't get that, so we have to, you know, that comes out of taxation. So, understanding where, where our revenue comes from is, is just as important to, to understand where our expenses are going. And if people want to have a conversation of, on expenses and services, we should have that earlier on in the process. You know, we do a lot in our community with our, with our human services, um, our culture and recreation. We spend two million dollars a year on, on, on those items. And it's, it's money that's well spent. I would never want to take away from that. But the cost of that is creeping up year after year. We're having pressure on our revenues. So I'm concerned about debt, long-term debt. I'm concerned about our revenues, more so than I am about expenses, because expenses are controllable. You only have a finite area where you can, where you can generate revenues from. So at some point, you know, we have to, we have to really take a hard look at our revenues, so...
And looking at those expenses, like, you know, obviously, benefits and all that is, is one of the biggest chunks that we have. And a strategy to reduce benefits and pension takes years, if not, you know, a decade to truly execute. So I think that's something we need to look at. I know, you know, it's a little bit different in, in this sector than it is in the private world, but, you know, the reality is, is these are very lucrative benefit programs. And I think that we need to do some benchmarking and just think further ahead. I don't think it's anything that anyone at this table or, or maybe in this building can even do. It's, you know, bringing in experts that can help us do that a little bit more, to think for the future for those costs that we, you know, maybe can control that are growing so exponentially.
Well, I think probably a good place to start is to have a good understanding of how that works, because, um, there's not a lot we can do with pensions. They're pretty much set by the, the Norfolk County. We are part of, we are, we're a member of the Norfolk County system. Some communities have their own pension system, but even they follow the same PERAC rules that, that, that we follow with Norfolk County. The health insurance program, we've done a lot with, believe it or not. And our rates this year only went up point eight percent over, over last year, or for next year. So we're actually in good, pretty good position this year compared to other years, where we've seen sometimes nine and ten double-digit expense, increase in those numbers. So that's a, that's good news for us this year. But we actually have done a lot with plan design, um, and, and added more in terms of, um, and putting more on employees to, to help pay for that cost, because that is an expensive benefit. And our contribution rate is seventy-thirty, which is actually in line with, with the area. And, um, and we actually, on terms of our, our pension benefit for health insurance, we're actually one of the lower communities for that. We, we actually, uh, we, when a person retires from Foxborough, they pay fifty percent of their health insurance, um, as opposed to seventy percent. So, um, with the idea in mind that once you hit sixty-five, then we, we pay fifty percent of the, of the Medicare supplement plan.
That's still a very lucrative, you know, in the grand scheme, you know?
It's a, it's a cost factor, there's no question about it. So, but I think in terms of us being, of offering, it's, it's an expensive proposition for any community, period. But in terms of us being on the, on more expensive side, that's actually not true. So I think what, what we have to do though is look at ways we can, we can control costs, um, perhaps in, in, in other ways we can design plans. That's, that's a progressive process, that's something we're constantly looking at.
And just, I didn't say that I think we're on the high side of other communities or towns. I just think that it's something we always need to be evaluating and not looking at, okay, what do we do this year versus, versus last year? It should be, what's this going to look like five years from now? You know, where is the design, the wellness, you know, that whole strategy taking us?
Right. And that's, and that's being discussed at a much higher level, in terms of the Maya program. We, they, they, we're actually looking at that very progressively, in terms of how the plans are going to be designed in the future. And what programs we can offer the communities to keep the claims down. And, and, you know, wellness programs are very active in this community. We do a lot with exercise here. We do a lot with food programs and nutrition programs to try and keep our employees in a better, in a better, better position. So that has paid off, it's starting to pay off.
Yeah, and I guess that's just, you know, that's the kind of strategy it's helpful to hear, when you see that big chunk of the pie, you know, to know how we're addressing that and keeping up with it and ahead of it.
Well, you're absolutely right. I mean, it's the right strategy we should, it's a, it's a constant strategy to, to, to work on those, because they're the big, they're the biggest impacts on our budget is, is healthcare and pension, there's no question.
These Maya Health Wellness Programs are not only helping us by keeping our workforce healthier, um, you know, at work, but we're also getting rewards at the end of the year. We've been recognized year after year and gotten healthy check back towards our, our insurance programs, so...
Reducing that cost.
Yeah, that's great.
So I think the other, the other part of it is, is maintaining financial flexibility within the town. I mean, the ability to put four million dollars down on the Borough School, save the taxpayers, you know, one point seven five million dollars, and allow that to be included debt instead of excluded debt. So, having that financial flexibility is, is important. I, I understand people are concerned about their, their tax bills, um, and the tax rate and, and the services. But you have to look at, at the bigger picture and see where you compare it. I mean, we look at, at just Foxborough, right, and what's good for us. But when you look at what's around and, and what the comparable towns are doing, we're, we're right in the middle of it. We're not the highest, we're not the lowest. But when you compare what we get for the buck, people want to move to Foxborough because of the services that we provide and the sense of community that's, that's built here. And, and I don't think you can put a price on that. But we have to, we have to be diligent, looking at our expenses, identify revenue sources, um, because, you know, we, we don't get a lot of help from the state. You look at Mansfield, I mean, Mansfield's getting sixty, seventy percent, no, no, I shouldn't say that much, but they're getting twenty-three million dollars a year in state aid.
Right. Are they considered a growth community?
So a good chunk of their operating budget is coming from the state and state aid. So I think we just have to, you know, keep an open mind and take a hard look. When we say level services, what, what does that entail? And do we really want to have level services? Do we like the services that we have and do we want to continue with that?
Well, I think the conversation of, of understanding where the expenses come from, where the revenues come from, having that base understanding, a better understand perhaps of that, and, and getting more into that discussion is important, so, so you can actually strategize from there as to how we can perhaps do things, some things better. I mean, we've done a lot with solar, uh, so it's actually helped reduce the, the operational cost of electricity. We've, uh, we've done to, we purchased our streetlights and we've put in LED programs, which have actually helped us. And, um, in, in providing better lighting for the streets and then better ownership of the, of our, of our assets. So, um, so this, this, obviously, that's something new thing that's coming on the horizon. And, um, you know, uh, going to, to, to progressive programs all the time is something that we have to do. And doing more regionalization is, is really, I think, a huge thing too. And we're doing a lot more with that.
We're also very actively involved in a loss control program. And, um, and we meet every couple of months to look over where are our, our insurance losses. And we, we meet with, uh, many of the major department heads, as well as our insurance providers, um, to look at where are areas where we can reduce our liabilities, reduce our cost, and run preventive programs to help keep, help keep our people at work and our equipment and facilities, uh, unbroken. So that's something, in fact, we're meeting, uh, later this month, in a couple of weeks, uh, over at DPW. Babs Kelly coordinates that program for the town at no extra, you know, benefit to her, other than she knows is providing a great, um, payback and benefit to the town in controlling those costs.
So I think we're doing a great job. I think it's just bringing those discussions forward, that we can, you know, look back, look forward, what we're doing, kind of set that stage before, you know, the big fat binder.
So I, I, I think you started off by saying it, Dave, that we don't do a good job of, of talking about that, and I think you're right. I think we need to talk more about the things that we've been doing.
So if you, you take, you take the, uh, the rate-setting meeting, right, the classification meeting that we have? It's one meeting, the assessors come in, everybody's glassy-eyed and say, oh, you know, what's, okay, yeah. I, I, I agree. You know, let's, let's do this. I think more of a discussion to, to inform the public of how, how our taxation is, is created through, through valuation and the number of parcels, and how the, how the rate that we set impacts the tax bill and, and the commercial rate, and how that impacts the tax bill, and how we, how we have the split rate, and how we can balance some of that, some of that burden, take some of that burden off the taxpayer and, and shift it to, uh, the commercial taxpayer. So I think, I think those are the, the type of discussions for, for education that, um, I understand now, but it's, it's taking, it's taken a long time. Lots of meetings and lots of research to understand, uh, how taxation is actually, actually implemented. So, I think we do a better job.
Okay. Anybody else have anything on that? Alright, um, selectmen's update. Just, um, Mike and I went, uh, last week or ten days ago to the fire station, uh, for the pinning of three new firefighters. So want to welcome Sean Philbin, Aiden Farrell, and William Graves to the, um, Foxborough Fire Department. It was a great ceremony. Actually, it's too bad the chief just left. I also wanted to congratulate him on being, uh, one of the four, uh, agencies selected for that, um, sexual assault and domestic violence program. Do you have any information on that, Bill?
I don't, uh, but I didn't bring it with me tonight, so I apologize for that.
Yeah, so we got the emails, four agencies nationwide.
I did see that, yeah. It was, um, yeah, it's, it's one of the few in, in the country.
Yeah. That's it, anybody else have anything on selectmen's update? Okay, um, town manager update?
So just a, a reminder that we are going to be doing the Capitol, um, Plan Discussions on Saturday, this, this coming Saturday. Saturday, this coming Saturday here at Town Hall, starting at 8:00 in the morning. We've got a full schedule of discussions with various departments about their capital requests. We'll be doing, going through the hearings with the various departments. We don't have enough money for all the requests, which is typically the case every year, but we'll go through the process and see how we can try and come up with a plan and a strategy to try and address them the best way we can.
It's televised, right?
It is televised, plan to be televised. So we did start of that tradition last year, and we continue to do it this year as well. And then, as far as, next week I do, actually Saturday afternoon, I plan to leave for vacation for a few, for a week. I'm looking forward to that, quite honestly, so, but Mike will be in charge, so you can call him.
What's the date of your vacation?
I'll be away the ninth through the 16th.
Are you here for?
Saturday to Saturday.
Are you here for the CIP meeting?
I'll be here, yeah, I'll be here in the morning. I'll be, I believe my flight's at 5:30 at night, so. All right, that's all I have.
One position that we're in the process of interviewing for, and that's the Assistant Treasurer Collector, and as we discussed earlier, we're looking to wrap that up within the next couple of weeks. That's all I have.
Okay. All right, action items.
All right, we've got quite a laundry list, so. Move to approve Jake and Joe's request for extension of occupancy hours on April 13th, May 11th, June 8th, July 6th to 2:00 a.m. for UFC fights.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion?
That still obviously falls within the liquor gets cut off when normally does, what's that, 11:30?
Correct.
Okay.
Motion was made, seconded, there was discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve public event application for the 8th Annual Bailey's Run for Autism Event on Sunday, April 7th, 2019, with the run starting at 10:00 a.m.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Move to approve the public event application for Foxborough's Youth Baseball and Softball Association's opening day parade on Saturday, April 13th, 2019, from 9:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the public event application for the Foxborough Cares 5K Road Race on Saturday, June 1st, 2019, with the race starting at 10:00 a.m.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion?
Under discussion, because I'm part of the applicant on that, I'll recuse myself.
Motion made, it was seconded, there was discussion, Jim's can recuse. All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to reappoint Leela McNeff, sorry, to the Foxborough Cultural Council for a three-year term expiring March 8th, 2022.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Move to accept a gift donation of $700 to the Boyd and Library from the Friends of Boyd and Library for Museum of Science Paths.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Move to accept a grant in the amount of $1,500 from the Walmart Foundation to the Foxborough Police Department for the International Law Enforcement Exchange Program.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Move to approve a gift donation of $105 to the Council on Asian Human Services from the Light Bodies, Mary McInnany, and the Rise for the Program at the Senior Center.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourned? Good night, everybody.